Yeah, he had a proposal revenue increase for our state. It was a close vote. Some of the members of this panel didn't vote for it, some did. Thank you very much to those who did. But we had to do it in order to have the money to pay for our schools and our health care and for our human service.
Two years ago, we did this town hall type of meeting where we got our leaders to come here and discuss Latino issues with us in person. And we thought, it being the ninth annual conference, census numbers just coming out, a really bad budget year, that we would ask them to come back and discuss some of the issues and where they see our Latino community headed here in Illinois. So I am going to quickly just list everyone going down. We have Governor Pat Quinn with us. We have Senate President John Colleton. Got Majority Leader Barbara Lynn Curry. We've got Leader Mike Fortner, Representative, Leader, Representative, I guess all of them, right? And we've got Minority Leader Christine Redonio. And we are going to go straight into some questions. Now, not all the questions are going to be asked, but we're going to try to get to as many as we can. And of course, I lost my stuff. All right, so first question, and what we'll do with this first question is we'll just have, start with the Governor and go all the way down, and then as the other questions come up, we might direct them directly to one person or whoever thinks they see fit can definitely answer it. So, "With the census showing the tremendous increase of Latinos in Illinois, what impact do you see this having on jobs, health care, education, and what plans do you have to address these issues?" Start with the Governor, please.
Okay, well, I don't think there's any question that there's a tremendous and dramatic growth of Hispanic population in our state. We are the best reflection of the population of the United States of America of any state in the Union. And right now, our state, we have 23% of the children going to grammar school and high school, 23% are Hispanic kids. And we have a lot of work to do to make sure they get top-notch education. I think it really begins at birth. We've got to invest more in early childhood education to make sure all of these children get a good early start on making sure they learn as much as possible. We also have to invest in our general state aid to make sure we have sufficient revenue for these schools that these children are attending. Many of them are overcrowded. We've invested, thanks to the good work of our Senate and House, in building new schools. The UNO model on the southwest side of Chicago is particularly inspirational. We have some other models as well, but we're building more schools across Illinois, but particularly in areas where there are Hispanic children, where the schools are overcrowded. I think it's very, very important that we work with our community colleges. We have 48 of them in Illinois. Many of our veterans who are coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan are Hispanic veterans, and when they come back, many of them are looking at community college. And we want to make sure that they can use their new GI Bill of Rights in a way to get a good job, that they can support themselves for the rest of their lives. So it's very important, we have good community colleges available and four-year universities. Many of our students at our four-year public and private universities are on scholarship. They're on MAP scholarships. That's the Monetary Assistance Program of our state. About 150,000 students who are needy and merit the ability to go to college are using these scholarships. Unfortunately, we have a waiting list of 200,000, and many of those young students are first generation in their family to ever go to college. And the finances enter the picture on whether they can afford to go to college. So I really see investing in education from birth and early childhood to definitely grammar school and high school into community college and four-year university scholarships. Those are key ways to help a booming, growing population with lots of energy and entrepreneurial ability and wanting to make a difference in the state of Illinois. Thank you, Governor.
First of all, I want to thank you very much for inviting me. This is a great opportunity to hear from you and for you to hear from us. And I want to thank you and our caucus in the Senate for helping organize this. You have very good representation in the Illinois Senate with your four state senators, and they make sure that you get your fair share in the Illinois state budget, in the capital bill. In fact, maybe even more than your fair share. What do you think, Senator Munoz? No?
Never enough.
No? Not more than your fair share. They do very, very well. Because, as the Governor said, this capital bill that we passed, bipartisan. We got Republicans and Democrats. We worked together. It wasn't easy, because it involved, you know, some fees and some taxes. But we passed it, and no other state in the nation came even close. We appropriated $28 billion. And as the Governor said, there was money for the charter schools, for the community colleges, for elementary and secondary schools, which is where the growth in your community is. And I have to tell you, what was really amazing is that this year also was the year that we did our redistricting. And I was very curious to see what the maps looked like showing the census figures for the Latino population. And what was very interesting to me was not just the fact that there was an increase, but where Latinos lived in the state of Illinois, all over the state of Illinois. It's not just concentrated over by Colleton Street in Pilsen, which was named after my ancestors, but actually, as you know, Aurora, Elgin, and all places throughout the state, which means your influence is going to be felt throughout the entire state in every legislative district.
And I certainly would underscore what Senator Colleton just said. I am Barbara Lynn Curry, State Representative, here really for the Speaker of the House, Michael Madigan, who wasn't able to join us today. And I would have to assert, as John did, the importance of the Hispanic representation you now have in the Illinois General Assembly. Toni Barrios is my colleague in the House, and she works just as hard as Senator Munoz does to make sure that your community does not get short-changed. I was involved very heavily in the remap process, and I think that the remap process did increase the number of districts with Hispanic majorities. Very important, because the idea behind remap is to make sure that one person's vote has just as much meaning as somebody else's vote, and to make sure that minority communities have an opportunity to affect the outcome of our elections. So you will be, I think, well-represented. However you choose to use your votes in the 2012 elections, you will have an opportunity to make a major difference. I agree with the Governor that early childhood education is critical to this community. The Hispanic community is young, vibrant, and energetic, and it is important that you are all over the map, but it's also important that we respond with new school buildings, new construction in the areas where Latinos are most heavily concentrated. We did adopt, and I believe the Governor has since signed, an act this year that would create a foundation to accept private donations so as to make sure that there are scholarships available, private scholarships, for people in your community. I think that's very important. And that youngsters in this community who have finished high school in Illinois and have lived here for a time, never mind it may not have been their choice to come to the United States, they will be entitled to in-state tuition. But I can't underscore enough the importance of what the Governor just said about the Monetary Assistance Program, because many people in the Latino community don't have the resources even to meet the in-state tuition cost without help. So we are here to continue working with you and your representatives. And as I say, a dynamic, young, energetic community. You are making a difference across the state culturally and educationally, and we are here to help.
Barbara? Well, first of all, thank you for having me here. I'm not Tom Cross, our Republican leader in the House. My name is Mike Fortner, and I'm happy to represent Tom, who had another engagement that caused him to have to miss this important event. As I look at the census numbers, which is what's driving a lot of the discussion that we've heard up to this point, not just the current census, but the last few, the growth in the Latino population in Illinois has accounted for something like nine out of 10 of the new residents of Illinois. It's been a tremendous increase over the last 20, 30 years. It's been steadily growing, and I'm drawn to compare to my home community of West Chicago. And there we saw the similar type of growth in the Latino community. And one of the things I think is important as we look forward are things that I saw happen in my community, which is areas that were previously storefronts in the old downtown have been now regenerated with entrepreneurs from the Latino community who have been starting businesses. I think it's going to be important for Illinois going forward to make sure we have an environment that's going to encourage that same type of entrepreneurship, of business growth, that can help the whole state of Illinois. So I look forward to initiatives that will help with that as we go forward.
I am Senate Minority Leader Chris Redonio. I'm glad to be here for the second town hall meeting, and I do appreciate the invitation. In my view, the census figures that show the dramatic growth in the Hispanic population in both Illinois and across the country portend very well for our country. The fact of the matter is, the Hispanic population, in contrast to the non-Hispanic population, is younger and is reproducing at a much higher rate. We need you, because we are not replacing ourselves. We need to energize the economy with more population to get the workforce bigger, to support an expanding economy. So I think it works both for you as well as us, the fact that, you know, we need each other. I think the single most important thing that we can do for the Hispanic population and the non-Hispanic population, however, is to work hard to make sure that people have job opportunities, you know, so that we need to focus less on remedial kinds of programs at the state, so that people have opportunities to advance themselves. Clearly underlining that is the need to have a well-educated workforce. I was very happy to participate in the capital bill and really encourage $100 million going to charter schools in Hispanic areas. Badly needed, but obviously that's an investment in all of us. So those kinds of efforts we need to continue, and I will be happy to continue working in that direction. So I think that, in addition to the fact that we both need each other, I think that as time goes on, that we'll see a melding of the Hispanic and non-Hispanic population. Of course, we'll all still have our roots, and we'll carry our flags. I'm Irish, and it will make all of our lives richer, though, when we each get to share in one another's culture. And I think that will be good for the state, and good for the country, and good for all of us personally.
Thank you. Next question. What are your views on minimum wage? Many of our families are affected by it.
Well, I support the minimum wage. That was one of the big issues of a year ago in the election campaign. I want to thank the Latino community for supporting me. I won the wide share of the vote there, and my opponent in the campaign wanted to reduce the minimum wage, and I thought that was the wrong way to go. And I support indexing the minimum wage every year to the cost of living. I think we should do that. And related to that, I think we need to improve the value of the earned income tax credit in Illinois. That is the very best way to fight poverty. It was supported originally by President Ford, and then President Reagan. President Clinton expanded it at the federal level, and so did President Obama. As a matter of fact, President Obama, when he was a state senator, worked to help create a earned income tax credit, which is very important for working families raising children. And he got that established in our state of Illinois, and I think we need to expand the value of that, improve the value of it. And we are discussing that right now, taking the earned income tax credit, which right now in our state is 5% of the federal amount. I'd like to see it moved up to 15% of the federal amount. It would help a lot of families raising children. And that's something I think very important in the Latino community, because as mentioned, it's a young community with many children. And one of the best ways to help children is to help their parents get more income. And the earned income tax credit is a great way of fighting poverty. We have 935,000 households today in Illinois who benefit from the earned income tax credit. Many of them are Hispanic households all across our state. And I think it's important to realize, the Latino community in Illinois is not just in Metro Chicago, it's everywhere in our state. I got the chance to visit with a couple of young ladies just before coming on in Aurora, Illinois, our second-largest community now, after Chicago. Very strong Hispanic presence there. And Joliet is fourth-largest community in the state. You have Rockford, third-largest, and we, Elgin is eighth, you know, greatly expanding population. But we want to make sure that hard-working people raising children, the most important thing to do in life. Jackie Kennedy, the widow of the late President, once said, "If you bungle raising your children, nothing else in life matters." And I feel that this movement, that we're here today with this town meeting, we should go out with the view and mission that raising kids in Illinois, we want to be the best in the whole country, and giving tax relief to working families raising children is high on my agenda.
And so we'll just have everyone answer all the questions. We'll make it a little easier, then. So next, please, Senator.
The question about the minimum wage. Actually, I believe Illinois is, I think, third or fourth highest minimum wage in the United States, and I am very proud of that. I think it's a good idea to have a higher minimum wage. I know there's some business interests that say that it actually discourages people from being hired, but I don't agree with that. I think that what we have seen is an increase in income disparity throughout this nation over the last good number of years. And having a minimum wage where people can become part of the middle class actually helps the economy, because the money that they earn, they're going to spend it, because they have to. And so, but to make it so low that it's not even enough to live on, it doesn't make sense to me. So I think it actually helps our economy by doing so, and I would support increasing it over the years, as the Governor indicated.
And so, I actually sponsored the first bill that took the state of Illinois minimum wage above the federal minimum wage. I agree that it still is not high enough, and I would want to index the minimum wage in Illinois to inflation, as both the previous speakers have said. I too am a strong supporter of the earned income tax credit. In fact, I was the sponsor of the bill that established an earned income tax credit in Illinois. And the Governor mentioned that this is an idea that has broad bipartisan support. When Ronald Reagan signed an expansion of the earned income tax credit, he said that this was the most family-friendly, the most family-helpful program that he'd ever had the opportunity to sign onto when he was President of the United States.
Well said. I think the minimum wage is an important floor, but we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that we do want to see people move up into the middle class and give them opportunities. I think the best way to do that is not necessarily with the minimum wage, but by focusing on making sure that people have the educational tools to succeed at college and career, because that's really the best tool that is going to move people into the middle class, to have better lives for themselves. And I think we could direct our efforts best in that direction, though the minimum wage remains an important floor to have in place.
Yeah, I would concur with that concept. I think the minimum wage is an important floor. I think we need to be careful to remain competitive with states around us, but it is an important floor. But I do agree that in addition to the educational opportunities, the job opportunities have to be available, too, for people to really transition out of the lower-income rungs into true middle class. And to me, that's the goal. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. So now we have, "We have yet to reach equity in terms of state services, contracts, and employment for Latinos. What are you doing to ensure that the Latino community gets the services it needs and is included in state contracts as well as state employment?"
Well, I think this is a very important issue, because our population of Illinois, as I said, is very representative of our entire country, and we want our state employment, those who work for the state, not only the state of Illinois, but the universities, the community colleges, to reflect the diversity of Illinois and the Hispanic population. With us today is our Director of Central Management Services. His name is Malcolm Weems. Maybe Malcolm will want to stand up here so everybody knows where you are? Oh, well, all right. He's standing up with a bad leg, too. But we had a diversity summit just the other day at IIT with a very large attendance, and it's designed to make sure that our businesses and individuals know how to interact with state government with respect to employment and contracts, the opportunity to get grants. We cannot just sort of stand by. We've got to be proactive, and that's Malcolm's mission. His job is to make sure everybody knows what the rules are. We got to follow the procurement rules, so the letter of the law. But at the same time, we don't want anybody who has a good business or a good ability to do a job or to do a grant to not know about it because of just lack of information. So this is an outreach effort that especially now is more important than ever, and I hope everybody here can carry that gospel forward. The gospel means good news, and the people of Illinois want to make sure we have diverse businesses doing business with our state, and it's very, very important.
I'd like to indicate that, it's a very good question. When I got elected President of the Senate, which was almost three years ago, the first thing I wanted to do was make sure that our own staff, the people that we hire, reflect the population of the state and the population of our caucus. And so, in working with our Hispanic caucus, I've been seeking people who want to work for our staff. Most people are working in Springfield, but some in Chicago, to try to make sure that we have a fair outreach. And so if anybody out here is looking for a job, you give your resume to Toni Munoz. And we'll see if we can help you.
And I strongly support the state's minority and female business enterprise program, which makes sure that we try to have a goal of giving vendors who are members of minority groups, who are women and who are owners of, who are themselves disabled, the opportunity to participate in state contracting. So I count on the Governor, and I count on Mr. Weems, to see to it that the programs work as effectively as they should. And if you're not aware of how those programs do work, and you are a vendor, you've got some goods or services you'd like to sell through the state of Illinois, please contact one of us.
And I think what the Governor pointed out is very important, because what we need to do is we need to have the outreach, to hear from your businesses who are seeking contracts. We need to be engaged. We need to make sure there's a dialogue. So if there are difficulties, if you're having trouble getting through the process, I want to see that we're providing the opportunity to get the bids that you'd like to make in a competitive way, so that you have an appropriate share of contracts with the state of Illinois. But that takes a kind of dialogue that we need to not just do once in a while, we need to maintain it on an ongoing basis, so that we know if there are difficulties, we can address those difficulties and make sure the process is working the way it should.
Yeah, I too support any kind of outreach effort we can do to make sure that everybody understands how to access state contracts, and how to fill out the paperwork, and how to participate in the process, so that they can be successful. So I think we need to continue to improve on that outreach to the extent we can. With respect to the issue of having the state workforce, you know, fairly represent the Hispanic community, I have to give credit to Marty Sandoval, who is a senator, and I've sat on appropriations with him for a few years. He dogs this issue like you would not believe, and just, you know, goes after every agency. And that's okay. It's an important question, but I think what we find out oftentimes is, we are looking to hire people, and somehow we're not connecting, that those people aren't coming forward. So again, I think the outreach, you know, forums like this, where, you know, we figure out what are the best ways to let the community know about opportunities, will benefit all of us, and I'd love to participate in those efforts.
Next question. What is the state of Illinois doing for our veterans returning from Iraq and Afghanistan? And if you don't mind, I'd like to start with that one. I just did a bill in the Senate for veterans that have served in Iraq and Afghanistan and have the campaign ribbon. They are able to take the state police exam without requiring the college degree. Again, that just only enables you to take the exam. You have to pass everything else. My partner, Eddie Acevedo, passed it in the House, so it should be coming to our Governor, and then I'll turn it over to our panel.
Well, I'm very interested in that particular issue, because a lot of our service members who have served honorably in military police capacities in some of the harshest places known to human beings, in Iraq and Afghanistan, when they come home, if they don't have a chance to, get a chance with our state police or other police agencies, it's very unfortunate. So we do want to make, knock down some of the barriers for returning veterans, especially Hispanic veterans. I know the family of Danny Zimzobo, who was killed in Afghanistan after serving in Iraq as a United States Marine, Semper Fi. He then came home to Chicago and couldn't find a job. And so therefore, he volunteered for the Army, and he went to Afghanistan. He lost his life there. And at his funeral, his mother said to me that we can't bring Danny back, but the least we can do is work as high as we can, as hard as we can, to get our veterans who come home, have fought for us in faraway places. They shouldn't have to fight for a job right here in Illinois. And so I do want Rodrigo to stand up, who is our Assistant Director of Veterans Affairs. He's right here, and I disappointed him. Rodrigo's job is to make sure that we carry out that promise. And I saw the other day that the President of our country, from our own state of Illinois, was able to convince the Congress to sign a returning heroes job credit for employers to get a credit, to hire the veterans from this particular conflicts in particular. And so I think we ought to take a look at that in Illinois. And we also need to work with all of our employers, and that's one of Rodrigo's jobs, is to make sure that employers know what veterans are all about, and especially Latino veterans. If you look, take a look at the Killed in Action from our state, there's many, many Hispanic surnames. They've given their last full measure of devotion to our democracy. And I can remember being in East Aurora, near the high school there, where three young United States Marines, all Hispanic young men graduating from high school, lost their lives in Iraq, serving our democracy. So it's quite important that we work very hard to make sure that all of our veterans, and especially those who are Hispanic, get a fair shake when it comes to jobs, economic opportunity, starting a business, getting access to a credit, and definitely housing. And one-third of the veterans, or one-third of the homeless of our state, believe it or not, are veterans. This is shameful, and Wednesday and next week, I'm going to go, we're going to work on a housing development project for our returning veterans. So we have work to do, and that includes everybody, and really appreciate that question. And Rodrigo is a point man, along with our Director of Veterans Affairs, Erica Borgren, to make sure we take good care of those who've borne the battle.
I think really we should acknowledge the fact that our Governor has been a leading of all the Governors in the nation to recognize the value of our soldiers and our veterans, the recognition that he has given them. When we have unfortunately a death of a soldier from Illinois attends the funerals, there's no one in the nation that's brought more attention to the plight of the veterans, and I want to really thank the Governor for doing that. I myself was in the National Guard, I was in the Army, along with, I think Representative Chapiavie is the only other one who's in the General Assembly. And there's actually not that many veterans left in the General Assembly, which is kind of surprising. I think Tony, maybe about less than 10, maybe, in the Senate. And so I have a great appreciation for the fact that, first, they're serving their country, they do what we ask them to do, and we want all wars to end, the time for service ends, they come back. We have to really go out of our way to make sure that the jobs that we're trying to create for everybody make a special effort for the veterans. And I applaud the efforts of the Governor in that regard.
And I do as well. The Governor's been just an amazing friend to veterans who are coming back from Iraq and from Afghanistan to Illinois. and from Afghanistan to Illinois, and I follow his good example, and I follow his lead in this area, as in so many others. We have a special program of health care for returning veterans. We have created a whole separate lottery game, the proceeds of which go to help veterans with various kinds of problems and ailments, and I know that he's going to have a lot more good ideas, and I will be happy to sign up. I salute you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone who would leave a state for a few years and then come back is going to have trouble finding a job, finding housing, getting reestablished again, and that is as much true for a veteran as anyone else. In the case of the veterans, they've been leaving to serve us, and it is so important that we do what we can to help that transition back again. I want to add to Senator Colleton's, comment on, also add props to Representative Linda Chaplavilla, who as the only female veteran and a member of the Latino Legislative Caucus has been an absolutely tireless champion for these kinds of issues in the House, and she really does the caucus proud in that way.
Thank you. I couldn't agree with the governor more. The last thing a veteran should have to do when they come back is fight for a job. I mean, the best thing we can do for them is make sure that they have opportunities to become self-sufficient and carry on with their lives, and I think the bill that Tony had, you know, gives them an extra little boost in that direction, and that's great for the police work. If we could figure out ways to do that in other areas, we should try to do that as well.
Great, thank you. Now we'll change it to community health care. So serving Latino families through community outlets is essential to our population. What will you do to address this issue in a comprehensive plan considering the health care plan that has to be in place by 2014?
Well, I think this is a very important mission that we all have. The Affordable Care Act that our president led the way on and we have to implement is important in Illinois. For example, young adults are included in health insurance of their parents, if that's their choice. We have pre-existing conditions that in the past have denied people insurance. Under the new law, they're included. They can't be excluded based on pre-existing conditions. 10 years ago, I walked from the Mississippi River in Rock Island all the way to Chicago in Lake Michigan on behalf of decent health care for everybody, and there's many, many Hispanic families in Illinois that are underinsured or have no insurance whatsoever, and we've got to do something about this. This is really part of what the Affordable Care Act is about, and I feel that the health insurance exchange that is part of the law is quite important that we get done in Illinois. We have some work in the legislature to do. We've got to get this done because we can get some federal money to help implement this and carry out the letter of the law. Related to health care is not only physical health care, but mental health care. We cannot forget that. We just talked about veterans. Many of our veterans may have post-traumatic stress disorder and/or traumatic brain injury, and so we have to take care of the mental health needs of all of our citizens. That's part of decent health care. And don't forget oral health, dental health. We have Representative Lisa Hernandez here, my good friend, who used to work with me when I was at the Lieutenant Governor's Office, now she's in the General Assembly. She's a champion for dental health care, for especially children in Illinois, Hispanic children, and we got to make sure that you get a good start when it comes to your teeth. And that's part of health care, as far as I'm concerned, period, in the land of Lincoln.
You know, health care is going to really be one of the toughest issues we're going to have to face because we all know about the tough budget choices we have to make. Medicaid is the biggest part of our bills that we have to pay. We're behind in paying our bills. We have a, when there's a recession, a growing number of folks who are eligible, and at the same time, when we look and see what the city of Chicago is doing to try to balance their budget, they might be cutting back in certain areas for community health care. So it's really something that we're going to have to work at being even smarter in the way we provide that care. And we have to work with the providers to make sure that we have a more efficient way of providing the services, because at some point, we're going to run out of money, but the needs are there. I personally think that what the president did in Washington was a positive thing. I think there's many, many people have no idea what passed. They think they're against it because they think they know what's in it. I don't think they really do. And I think over time, people will see that it was actually a very positive thing, but it's an educational experience, because right now, folks think that it was a bad idea. We have to educate them after there's court challenges and elections to see what happens, but we have to educate people, I think, that the motives of that legislation at the federal level were the best, and if there's a better way to do it, let's get both parties together and see if we can improve it.
And I certainly agree that access to health care is critical to the health of every community. Under the Affordable Care Act, the federal act, an additional 200,000 people will be eligible for the state's Medicaid program, and there will be subsidies for people whose income is high enough to put them above that level. That is going to be enormously helpful to people who are trying to access health care, but where that health care is provided is also a key issue. Today in Illinois, there are many pediatric specialists who will not treat children who are on Medicaid. So the child who's got a serious ear problem may not be able to find a pediatric otolaryngologist, if I can say the word, who will treat that condition. They don't want to treat Medicaid patients because the state pays too little and pays too late. So we have a lot of problems in the health care arena. I agree with John that the federal Affordable Care Act is a very important step along the way to providing those resources, but we have work to do right here in Illinois, and I think it's time we rolled up our sleeves and got to work.
I had a firsthand opportunity to see how well community-based health care could work. Before I was a member of the legislature, I served for a number of years as the mayor of West Chicago, and I was able to bring in a federally qualified health center to our community, and it has been extremely successful to reach out and be able to provide local services in a cost-effective way. It still serves about 3,000 families a year, so it's been a very effective tool. I think we can look at that as a model elsewhere in the state to be able to identify places that can be well-served with that kind of community-based service that keeps it close to where the populations that need those services would be and do it in a cost-effective manner. So I'd like to see some of that.
Well, I think you probably got the drift from everyone else. You can't talk about health care without talking about the cost side. It's a huge part of our state budget. It's $15 billion. You add our pensions onto that, another $7 billion. That doesn't leave us a lot of money left for all the other important things that we've sat up here espousing, like education, transportation, and important services like that. So we have to talk about the two together. Access is key. I think what Representative Fortner mentioned in terms of primary care is very, very important. We have tried to push that in the Medicaid program because although you probably can't perhaps cut eligibility, we certainly can deliver the services that we do deliver more cost-effectively by avoiding, you know, emergency room-type visits, by treating chronic illnesses along the way in a primary care situation. So we need to change the way that we think about service delivery with an eye both to good patient care, good access, as well as having a system that is sustainable and allows us to do the other things that we've said are critically important, such as education and transportation and those kinds of things.
Next question. Can you reach an agreement on how to make timely payments to state-supported programs? Too many have closed in the Latino community.
Well, this is a central issue for our state finance. You know, it was not easy last January, but I had a proposal revenue increase for our state. It was a close vote. Some of the members of this panel didn't vote for it, and some did. Thank you very much, those who did. But we had to do it in order to have the money to pay for our schools and our health care and for our human services. And part of that package was half of 1% of the income tax would be devoted for a period of about seven years to paying off the debt that I inherited when I became governor. It was about $10 billion of unpaid bills, bills to a lot of community and human service agencies and many more, you know, all kinds of entities, businesses across our state, as well as institutions. We have to pay it off. It's about $4.5 billion now. The Springfield Chamber of Commerce, a rather conservative group, has proposed a plan of about seven years or so, paying off that $4.5 billion debt. We can go into the market as a state and get a very favorable interest rate and pay these bills off today. And in my opinion, this is the very best way to help small business in Illinois get an economic push that we need right now to keep people working and get new people working. So we're still debating this. It's called restructuring. There are some who say, well, that's more borrowing. Well, we've already borrowed the money. $4.5 billion is slow pay to literally thousands of businesses across our state. Should we make them wait six months to get their bills paid, or should the state pay the bills through a restructuring that other entities have done elsewhere, and it's been very successful, and we can do it here? So that's definitely perhaps the most controversial issue we've heard here today, but if we want to help those agencies, El Velor and many more who are working with our children and have to wait months on end to get their bills paid, I want to do something about that, and I think the restructuring is the best plan.
I agree with the governor. Ladies and gentlemen, we had a two-year period that was the worst in the history of the United States for the states. It was a recession like none we've ever experienced. As a result, we had a dramatic drop in revenues. And, you know, unlike private businesses, we can't just sell off, you know, the unperforming parts of our government. We are a government, and we have to provide basic services, and sometimes in a recession, those costs actually go up for government. So we have this debt. As the governor said, we are borrowing this money now from people that didn't know they were going to lend it to us, and in effect, we're borrowing from our vendors instead of our lenders. So what is wrong with acknowledging that, going to a lender and saying, you give us enough money so we can pay off these bills, we'll pay you off over four or five years, we'll do that by reducing our expenses over those four or five years, we will give a jolt to our economy by repaying everybody that we owe the money to. And by the way, the money is owed to people who are really owed the money. People, even corporations that pay income tax or do a refund, people that work for the state, that go to a doctor, those doctors don't get paid for months and months. People who do business with the state, why would they want to bid on anything anymore if they have to wait so long to get their money? Which means they don't bid, and we have fewer bids, we have higher prices. And then, of course, school districts and other third-party providers for our state are not getting paid on time. Some people go out of business, trying to do business for the state. So it takes a bipartisan effort. Now, I understand that it's very tempting to be with a slogan, say, "No more borrowing", okay? But really, if you examine this and you look at what we've done, we've already borrowed the money. Will there be a little bit of interest to pay extra? I guess that's true. Not much, but a little bit. If you want to call that borrowing, fine, acknowledge it. But let's get the money back into the economy, because remember, going forward, we have a balanced budget. This year, we have not authorized more spending than we have money coming in. It's just this remnant of this recession. If we can get past that going forward, as tough as it will be, we will have balanced budgets. But we owe this money, we ought to pay it.
In fact, not only, not only do we owe these vendors this money, but we owe many of them with interest. So it isn't just a question of, are you going to have to pay interest? We are going to pay them in six months, or a year, or whatever it is. We'll be paying them with interest. So I think that the calculation has to be, how does that interest stack up with what we might be able to do if we actually went to a bank and said, here's what we'd like to borrow, and here is why. When people sign up to do business with the state, they didn't intend to be the state's banker, and that's exactly what we are asking of those people today. So I strongly support the governor's proposal. I think it's critical that we have a balanced budget this year, and I just have to make it clear that we are, over time, going to get ourselves out of this fiscal mess, but it is not going to happen in a day and a half. We owe it to our vendors to pay them, and pay them now, and the only way we can do that is through the restructuring the governor has described.
I agree with Representative Curry's last comment. We didn't get into this mess overnight. It's going to take a while to get out. I was very pleased with what we were able to do on a bipartisan basis in the House this year. We started out with a bipartisan effort to target our revenues, our spending, so that we could have a solid budget, so that we have a balanced budget, and I think that could bode well for what we can do going forward. What we need to do then, when we're looking at our vendors, is as we see new revenue coming in, we've had some revenue forecasts, they've been higher, we can start using that then to start in every year. We didn't get into it one year. We need to start reducing that debt load on a year-by-year basis, get us back to even again. I think that's something we can do. We've shown that we took the first step this year. I think we can continue along that path.
Yeah, I also have been opposed to the most recent borrowing plan, or restructuring plan. And the reason is, I'm not opposed to borrowing in general. In fact, I've supported it on a number of occasions. In fact, I've supported other proposals for borrowing that the governor's had. But what has always been presented is it's part of a plan that's going to get us out of this. And I voted for it twice, and it hasn't happened. Part of that plan was the income tax increase that was also going to stabilize things. That's a significant increase. That, too, hasn't stabilized things. So I guess if we had a budget going forward that I really saw a path out of this that combined measures to enhance the jobs climate, to cut back on spending, and there are still areas where we can cut, I mean, that's not going to get us out of it, but there are still some low-hanging fruit. If we could do that, if we could restructure programs that are very expensive, such as Medicaid, so that we can provide more service with the same or fewer dollars, and in the context of that comprehensive plan, borrowing was a piece of it, then I think it might be prudent to consider it. But to say, borrow just to give us a little relief for a few months, we're right back in the same spot we were, and we owe even more interest, and we still have vendors unpaid. So again, I think it's a matter of us getting a real plan, and it probably will be a multi-year plan to get out of this thing.
Thank you. Next question. For those of us who worked and paid into the pension for 25-plus years, what can you as legislative leaders do to ensure that I'll be able to have my pension when I need it? Thank you.
Well, I think this is a solemn obligation of our state that we do have various pension funds. One's the teachers' retirement system, there's a state university retirement system, there's also a state employees' retirement system, and all of those have to be proper with their payments to the men and women who have worked a lifetime and are entitled to a decent retirement. That's part of our constitution. I intend to abide by the constitution. We have to make significant new investment in these pension funds to make sure that they have adequate resources. It is a big challenge, fiscal challenge for our state right now. It does, you know, compete with things like education investment, health care investment, human service investment, public safety investment. So it's a balancing, and I admire our legislators who are here. They're hardworking, and we have to work together on reforms in the whole pension system so that those who are entitled to their benefits get them, and I feel that this year, that'll be an important subject of the legislative-executive working together. And I think as soon as we finish our work there in the end of this month, I want to appoint a pension-working group, so we have members of both the House and Senate, Democrat and Republican, working together with our office so that we come up with good proposals that maintain the pension of the person asking the question, make sure it's there, same time, make sure we have a system that's adequately funded, and also have adequate funding for these other important public services. these other important public services.
Governor, we in the legislature are obviously very concerned about the long-term health of the pension system. We believe, I believe, that the pension system right now, where people are retired, people are working, is solid. But we know that, over time, it's going to cost a lot of money from the state to make sure that they stay solid. So a couple of years ago, we passed a bill that will save billions of dollars for future taxpayers by having, for new employees, a different deal, where they have to work longer, they have different calculations on how much money they'll get in their pension. And we passed that law, bipartisan. And it wasn't easy, because there were some unions that were opposed to it, but I think long-term, if you're interested in the strength of your pension fund, you should have supported it. So we passed that. I personally believe that the pension system for people who certainly are retired and those who are working right now, the Constitution guarantees that you have those benefits. And so the real dispute is not over the strength of the pension system. We have a law which we're following that requires us to pay not just the normal cost in the pension system, but an extra amount to catch up for decades of underfunding the pension system. That's why we have a weak system to the extent that we have a lot of unfunded liability, not because the workers didn't put their money in, but because we, the state, didn't put what we should have been putting in over years. And it's collective fault. It was Democratic legislatures, governors, Republican governors, but we did it. And so now, going forward, we are taking a lot of our money, maybe about as much as 20% of our money, to put it in the pension system. There are ways in which we could constitutionally improve the system. We could do through collective bargaining agreements on a contractual basis with unions of representing people who work for the state to strengthen the pension fund. And that's something that we should pursue. It doesn't make sense to me to pass an unconstitutional bill, say we did something, it goes to court for two years, we spend millions of dollars on lawyers, and then we come back two years later and find out we didn't do anything. Why waste our time doing that? Why don't we pass a bill that really means something?
I totally agree with Senator Colleton, that it would be not only unfair but unconstitutional to change the rules in the middle of the game. I did support changes in the way we structure pension benefits for people hired after January 1st, 2012, but I don't support the idea that the legislature unilaterally should make changes to the benefits people today think they are earning. And let me tell you this, for all the stuff in the newspapers, for all the individuals that may have gone overboard, the average state pension, average benefit for someone who's worked for the state of Illinois is about $33,000 a year without Social Security. The pension benefit for a downstate public school teacher, the average, is about $43,000 a year, again, with no Social Security. I don't think those pensions are living high off the hog, and I think we have a responsibility for fair play and for constitutional reasons to see to it that those benefits continue to be paid.
I think Senator Colleton made an important point, that I would agree with that, is there are two issues here. There is, how do we make programs that are sustainable for the employees going forward? We took an important step with the new employees to make sure that that part was sustainable. I do think we also have to look, even with the current employees, to make sure that if there are new benefits, that those new benefits are properly accounted for, because at times we do give new benefits, we'd want to make sure that those are paid for, because those are new benefits that would be given. At the same time, we have a backlog. We have this problem of unfunded liability due to a variety of causes, some of which was due to the legislature, some of which is due to different actuarial assumptions today than there were 15, 20 years ago. And we need to identify, how do we address those going forward? I think this is an important discussion we need to have, not just for what may have been failed to be funded by the legislature, but also for changes in how long we live and how many years we expect to enjoy our retirement after retirement. How do we make sure that that's sustainable going forward, not just for us today, but for the lifetime of these funds, which has a very long future ahead of them? I look forward to this discussion as we go forward through the spring session. I hope we're able to come to some decisions that will start resolving that.
Yeah. I think that the number-one goal in the whole discussion is to make sure that people that have earned pension benefits get those benefits. So at the end of the day, it doesn't do a lot of good if you have something that describes your benefits and there's no money to fund them. And I think everyone agrees we have to get to a point where we do that. We also have to be mindful of the fact that, you know, at this point, the pension contribution is crowding out all these other services we've talked about. There is proposals on the table. There are opinions that they are constitutional. There are opinions that they are unconstitutional. And that is with respect to the concept that the future work of current employees would earn under a different set of rules. No one at any point has ever talked about benefits that have been earned to date would be changed. I don't think that's on the table for anyone. We just want to be sure we can pay those, and I think everyone recognizes we're going to have to take some action to do that. That's a giant step from where we were. There's a lot of discussion about different possibilities in handling that. The governor, as you just heard, is planning on calling together a working group to look at that. So I think that if we do end up making changes, even if we do it going forward with current employees, the other piece that has to be a part of that is, there has to be a guarantee of some sort that the state, in the future, does not do what has happened over previous decades, and that is not fund the obligation. That has got to be a part of any discussion for change.
Great. Thank you. So, due to time constraints and some scheduling conflicts, this panel is actually going to end a little early. But I'd like everyone to give closing remarks, and I'd like to add, Governor, if you could please let us also know, if you have the answer, when will the Illinois Dream Fund Commission be announced?
Okay. Well, I'm glad you brought that up, Toni, because our appointments are just about complete. If you have anyone you want to nominate or suggest, it's still not too late, although very shortly, I would say, within a couple of weeks here, we're going to be naming the commission to carry out the law that was passed by the General Assembly that I signed this summer to raise the funds necessary to provide scholarships for deserving and needy students. And this is a very important law in Illinois. I feel strongly about it. I know everybody here, I think, feels the same way. If we're having closing comments, is that what you want me to do? Okay. I think our number-one challenge, obviously, is economic growth in Illinois. That's the best way to help the most people, a J-O-B. And if you want to fight poverty, if you want to fight crime, if you want to keep families together, keep people moving forward, it's economic growth. And we have to work on that together. This is a Democrat, Republican, independent mission. There's no such thing as a Democratic job or Republican job. It's an Illinois job. So that's what we have to work on. And I had the honor of going to China with Senator Munoz here, Toni Munoz, and Guermo from the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce was with us as well. And we do have to work with all of our businesses, particularly our smaller businesses, and particularly our Hispanic businesses, on export, developing new markets that can create new jobs. And our statistics just came in the other day. Illinois has increased its exports 32% this year over last year, where we were up 20% over the year before. So we can do this, and we want to teach every business how to do it. And it's very, very important, because we have excellent markets that are booming in Mexico, in Brazil, in Argentina, in Chile, in Peru, in Colombia. Some of our very best markets, our export markets, are in those particular countries, and there's tremendous growth opportunities. So I really look forward to working with everybody here. Anybody that's gone in the Independence Day Parade in September and gone down 26th Street knows what entrepreneurial energy is all about. There's hardly a storefront that isn't full up, and we've got to take that energy and make sure we create jobs and growth for everybody in Illinois.
Yes. I want to say that I was actually the sponsor of the Dream Act in the Senate. I was very proud of that. I would say, however, thank you, we had to compromise on that bill. And as a result of those compromises, we were able to get bipartisan support, and I appreciate our Republican colleagues for supporting it. But there were some things that were left out. And I want to tell you that next year, I want to continue to work on the Dream Act to see if we can expand it and make it even greater than the bill we passed so far. And once again, I want to thank all of you for inviting me here today.
Thank you. I think our challenges ahead are clear, jobs, of course, but also putting our fiscal house in order. And I'm pleased that we were able, this year, to adopt a budget that does mean that we are living within our means. And let me just say that it's been a pleasure to be with all of you this afternoon, and I know I can count on your help and hard work to make sure that we do develop those jobs and manage to put our fiscal house in order. So thank you.
On behalf of Republican House Leader Tom Cross, I want to also thank you for this opportunity to hear your questions and be able to provide our thoughts and insights as to your questions. I think you, with your set of questions, have hit on what are really the issues for your community as well as all of the state of Illinois. These are the challenges before us, and by continuing these types of interactions, hearing your questions, I think we can stay engaged, make sure that we're meeting your needs, and listening to your concerns for Illinois. Thanks again.
Well, again, I find myself agreeing with my colleagues. The biggest challenge we're facing is economic, and how do we get the economy restarted? The best thing we can do for the most people is give them employment opportunities. But there's a number of ways to get there, and that's what we wrangle about in Springfield. And I think just by virtue of some of the questions you've heard today and the answers, you can see that there's, you know, for every approach, there's upsides, there's downsides, and many times, competing goals, you know, they're competing against each other, worthy goals. You know, when you've got health care, education, pension, all competing against each other, it's a very difficult thing to do. But I really appreciate your attendance at an event like this and your engagement, because these issues aren't easy. There's no perfect answer, believe me. If there were, these problems would have been solved. But it's important to keep the dialogue open, and I certainly appreciate your continued open-mindedness and look forward to working with all of you as we go forward to try to solve these issues. So thank you so much.
A round of applause for each of our leaders that attended today. I want to thank you very much for being with us. As all of you can see, these issues are not Democrat/Republican. They're not, you know, government or governor versus House versus Senate. All these issues take bipartisan work to get addressed. And as mentioned, only through sessions like this, discussions like this, and actually coming to the table together will these issues be solved in Illinois. So thank you very much for your time here with us today. A couple just housekeeping notes. Our VIP reception will now start at 3:30 instead of 4 o'clock. You are all welcome to stay, as well as the leaders, those of you that can stay with us. You're welcome to join us. We also want to congratulate all of our scholarship recipients. If you're still in here, round of applause for them. Congratulations to all of you. I know you will make us proud. And your evaluations, you all had evaluations in your welcome folder. Please fill those out and give them back. They will really help us with next year's panels and discussions and just ideas also for what the Latino Caucus is going to work on as far as public policy in the coming year. And last but not least, I need to thank our sponsors. Without our sponsors, a day like this cannot be put together. So thank you very, very much on behalf of the entire Latino Caucus Foundation for helping us give the scholarships and supporting this type of event. Thank you very much for coming out today.